Up to today, taxi drivers have seen a loss of income in 25% when you adjust for inflation. 25% loss of income for a working person is a serious, serious obstacle to your quality of life. It has meant people that have had to take, you know, that have had to move, people who've come into our office with eviction notices, people, I cannot tell you the number of people we've had to refer over to Legal Aid Society for services, um, people who've had their kids choose whether or not to go to college next year or what kind of a college to go to in light of that economic reality, people that continue to work even when they're sick or they are deadly exhausted. It has been families that have literally sent their wives and their children back home because they cannot afford to keep an apartment for an entire family. So then instead, drivers will stay here, earn that income, and move in with others and have roommates with strangers rather than having that comfort of being to live here with their family. And you know, I'm not saying this to be rhetorical. I am saying this because this is the goddamn truth. We see this day in and day out at our office where within a week, we see over 200 drivers that come in and out for services. Sajad Mathen was a driver for 17 years in this industry. I'm sure you're all aware of his case. Chairman Yaski was kind enough to visit him at the hospital. Sajad was helping, was low, you know, he, he pulled over for a passenger in Midtown, a young woman. He saw she was taking some time, he realized she must be putting luggage into the trunk. He got out, he said, "Excuse me, miss, that's my job." He put the, you know, luggage into the trunk. As he was loading it, a drunk driver operating an SUV at high speed rammed into him from behind. His legs were pinned between the two cars. His left leg was amputated. He was in a medically induced coma for several days. We were at the hospital keeping vigil with this family. His right leg has a massive brace because they're, they're not sure if they'll be able to keep it straight. And you know, he is going to be at the rehabilitation center upon months and months and months. He's already had over a dozen surgeries. His wife and his kids had just been moved to Bangladesh a few months before this incident because they could no longer afford to be here as a family unit. His wife got the call, I was there when she was called. Then she came back to the country with her two young children. They didn't have a place to stay because he had moved out to live with roommates. And you know, they've been basically depending on the kindness of a few family members and mostly friends in order to get through this time. All he has available to him is a measly pathetic worker's compensation payment of less than $200 a week while he's in the rehabilitation center and trying to figure out how his wife and his two kids, including a newborn, are going to survive. So excuse me if I don't give a damn that a fleet operator is seeing a net return on their operation that's less than what they have expected. I see this every single day in this industry. I remember Kevin Fitzpatrick, who was a mentor to me, was a veteran driver for over 30 years. When Kevin got diagnosed with lung cancer, it was heartbreaking for us to watch him go from a hospital chemotherapy room back to the road because he had had no savings after being on this job for three decades of his precious life. Up to his last day on earth, that man had to work. I remember when Ennoy Malbranche was shot in the eye, point-blank range, at like, you know, about 7:00 in the morning in Brooklyn. They first robbed him, and then as a joke, they then shot that man. A few months before he was shot, his wife had just died from cancer. And you know, I remember talking to his kids who didn't know if they were going to have to bury a second parent within a couple of months. And I remember when Mr. Malbranche got out, all he could ask me was, "How do I continue to survive? I don't have any savings. There is no other insurance. I have nothing coming in." These are men and women. I remember when Vivian Borges was pregnant, and she was leasing from King's Brokerage. She'd just been diagnosed with diabetes, you know, at that stage of her pregnancy. And she was into something like her seventh month. She kept that car cleaner than anything I've ever seen in this industry. And they still took that medallion off that car, left her with nothing. The woman was seven months pregnant. Where was she going to go to get another job? We see these incidents day in and day out. And I'm not saying this to demonize every single garage owner. I'm not saying this to demonize every single agent. My point of this story is actually not them. My point of the story is the drivers and their families. When you are not able to earn a decent living, you have no savings to fall back on. And so when there is a crisis, you go from working poverty to desperate poverty, and people don't know what to do. I can't tell you what it's like to have grown men with, you know, teenage kids come to your office and you see them tearing up because if they lose their license for 30 days, they don't know how they're going to make ends meet. It is absolutely unacceptable to run an industry where men and women are laboring 12-hour shifts, 60 to 70 hours a week, serving close to a half a million people, making sure that they get home safe, they get home safely, they get to their work, you know, their place of business. They allow for so many industries, from airlines to retail to finance to the social services, to the education sector. All of these industries depend on the priceless labor of taxi drivers. It is unacceptable that we have an industry where we say that these men and women can see their incomes drop by 25% in just a six-year period and that we want to debate how much a fleet owner should still get. I'm sorry, but I, I can't, I mean, I'm, you know, I really try to be composed. I've been doing this for 16 years, and most of you know, I come up here and I come up composed. But when I hear these statements, it is beyond me to understand. Why don't we have a more humane industry? Why is the medallion the only thing that is worth any value in this industry? What about the man and woman who with their blood, sweat, and tears brings that medallion its equity? I'm sorry, when I hear about fleet owners that own two polo clubs or yachts or have so much in real estate, you know? And then you see drivers who are debating how they're going to go from a two-bedroom apartment to a one-bedroom apartment. I mean, my God, don't you see that injustice? We cannot allow that to continue. We need this raise. It's not rhetoric. We don't have political action committees. We don't have lobbyists that are going to come knocking on your doors or they're going to, you know, insinuate, you know, you know, campaign money or, you know, talk to the people that make the appointment. All we have to bear in front of you is our heart and soul, and that's what we're doing today. The drastic reality is the drivers need to earn, they deserve a decent living. The fare should be raised. The fare needs to be raised. Our proposal is a modest proposal of, you know, 10 cents more on mileage, 10 cents more on the waiting time. It's talking about $1.80, $1.50, up to $2 more for the average ride. You don't punish the one with the small trip. You don't have them subsidizing the longer trip. It is a fair proposal in all the connotations of the word "fair." It's not up to 5%. It has been a major cash flow, you know, imbalance for the drivers. The majority of drivers are still weekly drivers. Yes, they get charged the daily rate. Before 2004, I remember all the garages, and many of those owners happen to be in this room, they still gave, gave you, you know, charged you at the weekly rate. After 2004, even though you were still working six to seven shifts during the week, they started charging you by the daily rate. You go to Yakwell today, you go, you know, beginning of the week, you pay, you get, you have a steady car, you have a steady partner. You might change shift there, you might change shift elsewhere, it doesn't matter. You, they take your money for, for the entire week, and then they give you seven different receipts. And you see, this is for Sunday, this is for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Look at the date of the receipt, it's all the same date because you paid it all upfront. You're a weekly driver, you should be charged the weekly rate. You are making a sacrifice by working the entire week. You're making sure that the fleet has steady revenue. You're making sure that the city has steady service. You should be given the respect of a weekly rate and not be charged at the daily rate. For the DOVs, okay? There isn't just, listen, if medallion owners, the private owners are now demanding or getting, I don't know how much it was demand, if they're getting between $2,500 to $3,000, who created that scenario? They weren't out there lobbying for it? That scenario got created because the fleets were looking to take the private owners away from the agents. And so they could use that medallion and run it as, as a fleet operation, charging the daily rate compared to that owner, you know, getting their money from, from an agent. And who took the hit from that? Drivers. When Ron Arndt made that conversion a couple years ago, they took the medallion off all these cars. Drivers had paid thousands of dollars in investment to buy their vehicles. The medallion got removed, the car was worth nothing. And then they said to the drivers, "Well, we could either sell it in Chicago if the mileage is good enough, or you can come back to me tomorrow and, you know, you can start working here as a garage driver." Checkers is now saying that to the drivers today. We have no control. You know, the games get played between these two massive, you know, interests within the, within the market. And it's the drivers that pay the price and get squeezed in the middle. There has to be an equity where if you are, you know, where the rules have to be abided by everybody in this industry. There's such aggressive, you know, um, regulation of the drivers. But when the agents started charging the additional, well, first it was the, you know, the, for the technology, and then the tax stamp, even though that's a medallion. Both of these are medallion costs, but they got passed down to the driver. Then the so-called additional driver fee. When all of these started up, drivers had to keep paying more. There was never any relief given to them. When the fleet started charging you the daily rate, even though you're weekly, there was no relief ever given to the drivers. When they say to you, "There has been no lease cap increase," that's pure words. The reality is that they have managed to increase the cost on drivers by hook or by crock. It doesn't matter what's gone on paper. The reality is that they have, they have increased what they are charging to the drivers. And that is one of the reasons that drivers are earning 25% less today than they did even six years ago. As a risk, the credit card, 5%. If drivers were allowed to be the merchant on record, they would be paying half of that. Within a year, it adds up to $2,000 to $3,000 in loss of income. That is significant. That on top of the 25% less that you're earning otherwise. These are significant losses for people that, simply put, cannot afford it. We need a raise. We need the lease caps to be frozen. We need the overcharges to be stopped. We need a genuine lease cap enforcement unit that will make sure going forward this overcharge abuse does not continue. We need a health and wellness fund. And so when you are, Sajad Mathen, and you put 17 years of your life, when, since you were a kid, you, in your twenties, you put 17 years of your life into serving the public, that at the end, when something goes wrong, you have something to show for it. That the very industry whose, you know, wealth and vitality your labor and sacrifice are creating, that that industry will say to you, "We don't just care for you when you're sitting behind the wheel and earning our money. We just as much care for you when, you know, when you have been hit by a crisis and you're either in a hospital bed or, you know, you're at home recovering from any kind of an illness or an injury." We need this industry to show that drivers have a right to a living with some sense of dignity and that at the bottom line means a livable income and health and benefits. Thank you. Data Lee Desai, Executive Director of the Taxi Workers Alliance.
Commissioner Marina.
Other than the credit card charges, what are, what are these other abusive overcharges you're referring to?
So one would be where, you know, as I was saying, for your weekly drivers, you've got the steady car, the steady partner, you know, you're, you know, you're returning, it doesn't matter, you could be returning to the fleet to do your shift change, or you could be meeting elsewhere to do your shift change. But the, you know, you're paying upfront for the entire week. So they have their revenue, and you're providing steady business.
What's the overcharge?
The overcharge is that we have a weekly lease cap, which is $666 for the week. But you ask any driver, you know, they won't be charged that weekly rate. Instead, what the fleets will do, they take each day of the week, right? So let's say the standard, for the standard vehicle, day shift is 105. Instead of charging $666, they'll charge you over $700 because they take 105 and multiply it by 7, which is 735.
And the tax, $9.
The addition to that is the tax you have to pay.
If I interest in, or, Commissioner Marina, is, um, our lease cap rules have a number of, you know, they're, it's not just one simple number. So as Ms. Desai says, um, there is a rate for each of 14 shifts, Monday morning, Monday evening, Tuesday morning, Tuesday evening, and so forth. Um, we also, the lease caps also contemplate that a fleet may wish to lease to a driver for a week's worth, and so seven mornings or seven evenings. Uh, and it has, so in Ms. Desai's example, the morning rates are all $105. Um, the weekly rate for seven morning shifts is $666. Uh, the practice that she is, um, describing, if that occurs, would be that somebody, the fleet would charge, give you the car for all seven mornings, but charge $105 times seven, or $735. Uh, that, our rules, uh, expect that if a fleet leases to the same person all seven days, they won't be charged for seven individual shifts, they would be charged that $666 number.
That sounds more like an enforcement issue, though, rather than...
It is definitely an enforcement issue. I mean, the second version of overcharge would be for the DOV model where, you know, so you enter into the contract, the car is going to be financed to you, and you're going to be leasing the medallion. Um, what, what we have seen is that, and the medallion cap, right, is, is 800 if it's a standard, or it's 842 if it's a hybrid. But we can show you a number of contracts or, and receipts where instead, the driver will be charged, you know, um, an extra like $23, and they now call it a vehicle expense. But a few years ago, when it started, it was called the tax stamp on the receipt. And this tax stamp is a cost, it's a medallion tax, what, what you voted on earlier, right, on the, on the payment, that it will stay with Department of Finance. That is paid by the medallion owner. Um, but the fleet, you know, at the DUBs, um, the agents have been charging it to the driver and, you know, um, instead of including it as part of the medallion lease, which it, which it should be. Also, there's, um, they've been charging something called an additional driver fee. So it used to be that, it, like, for years, right? For 15 years that I knew of, you know, two, two drivers would go in together to the agent. They wanted to buy a car. Both of them would be on the contract. They'd share the contract, drop the expenses, what have you. Couple, about a year or so ago, the, the agent started saying, "We're only going to have contract one person at a time." And so you can't be the only driver, you know, 24 hours, seven days. You're going to have a partner, somebody who's working with you. So for that second person, they charge what's called an additional driver fee. They say it's for the insurance, but from everything that we have seen, the insurance policy is going to cover more than that one person. I mean, you know, so that's, that's the second thing. And it's absolutely, these are enforcement issues. But I wanted to bring it up in the context of this discussion to say that, that, um, you know, if you further increase the lease caps, all it will do is increase these, these higher leases that drivers are already paying. And in addition to this rulemaking, where the fare goes up and the leases are, you know, the lease caps are frozen, we need a redefinition so the rules become more clear and, you know, effectively immediately stop these overcharges.
Commissioner Marina, you have further, or that?
I'm, I'm a big pro now.
All right, I will, and Commissioner Polanco, I saw you had a question. I just want to make sure I, are, is, are you, is your testimony that, you know, the reason that medallion values have gone up so much and, and like doubled since the last fare increase in 2006? Are you saying that's in part because fleets and owners are actually collecting more, even though the lease cap rate has stayed the same, by, um, figuring out things like using the daily rate instead of the weekly rate, the additional driver fee, the, a vehicle sale price that has a built-in, uh, you know, a surplus to it? That there, the fleets, that the owner is in fact collecting more even though the stated lease cap has stayed the same? And that's what underlies the medallion fare value?
Yes, they're absolutely collecting more on the lease, first of all. Secondly, you know, on the 5%, yes, there's a percentage of that that they turn over to the vendor. But come on, even on 1.5, there is a fat built into that. They cannot say that there isn't. Even, um, and you know, there's other, besides the advertising revenue, you know? I mean, I, you know, I believe...
Okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted, just with time, so I didn't mean to. Commissioner Polanco, but, um, Commissioner Marina, I do want to, uh, say, I think that you're correct that this is an enforcement issue. Uh, we and, you know, I think it's an area where we at the TLC does need to do better. Um, the truth is, um, for, since the lease caps were created, uh, there were, there had not been any, um, enforcement action. Any summonses issued for lease cap violations. Presumably, um, that's not because there were never any violations, but because, uh, we didn't really have the resources to tackle that. Um, we've, we've, you know, even given our very limited means, um, we have now, uh, assigned one of our attorneys full-time to handling lease cap enforcement. That has begun to bear some fruit. Uh, we have issued the first sets of summonses for overcharges. Things that include the kind of contractual overcharges that, that Ms. Desai was describing, and also some more kind of, if you will, garden variety. Uh, for example, uh, called, saying that drivers were late returning when they weren't really late. And, uh, you know, that we felt comfortable issuing a summons for that after reviewing records of that particular fleet and seeing that every single driver was charged a late fee. It kind of seemed implausible, unless that every single driver was late. So, um, so I agree with you, it's an enforcement issue. And commissioners, if that's something that, you know, as a group you think would be useful, we can, we might have a briefing specific on that by the staff. Anyway, Commissioner Polanco.
Thank you. One question that I have, because I, I was reviewing the petition. This was submitted two years ago as well, as well?
One year ago.
One year ago. Because I know you mentioned there was a, the drivers have lost a 25% income. And I'm trying to figure out where the 25% is coming from. Is it for the credit card, um, the credit card fee that you mentioned, that 5%? Is it, is that 25% compensing that? Is it compensating the fuel cost? I just want to know, with that 25% income that you mentioned, where is that coming from?
Bus lane and the bike lane.
I mean, one is, um, one is absolutely fuel, right? We pay for that 100%. You know, I mean, at the time of our last overall fare raise, which was actually eight years ago, you know, it was $1.80. I mean, just since '06 to now, I think fuel has gone up by over 40%. Again, drivers bear, you know, bear that cost all out of their own pockets. Um, secondly, on the leases, there, there's so much more that since December 2011, a fleet driver is now paying an extra $4.77 per shift on the sales tax. Now, while, you know, while the TLC had regulated to include that as part of the, of the lease in 2009, there was litigation, and which overturned that regulation. And so now, we, now drivers are paying that $4.77, um, you know, on, on top of the lease. On, absolutely, on the 5%. But there, um, and it just in terms of all the overcharges, like how much people are paying in, in lease, how much of a large debt they're beginning in at every single shift. And then there are other factors on the roads. Um, I think Mr. Charbel was just saying, was talking about traffic. The fact that, you know, in many ways, we, drivers now have less road space to operate given the number of bike lanes and bus lanes that are out there. I mean, even though we're supposed to be able to pick up and drop off at a bus lane, you still get summoned for it. Um, you know, um, the illegal, you know, all the illegal pickups. I mean, I'm, you know, glad to see that the enforcement has picked up on it. But we know that driver income was, you know, absolutely affected by that, you know, over the past several years. Um, and, and the fact that through this recession, you know, you always call a recession a fleet's market because while they are able to get, you know, maximum dispatching of all of their vehicles, right, and collect that money on all of their vehicles, on the other flip side of that coin, drivers are facing more competition. And so, you know, I've seen some TLC data. When you look at the overall number of trips that are being completed by the industry, while the overall number might stay the same collectively, it's that the number of fares are being split among a greater number of drivers. And so, you know, vehicles, so per driver, you're actually booking less trips.
So then relating that 25%, basically, the sales tax and the, um, what you mentioned, the overcharges by the, by the garages, and then the 5% credit card fee, those are the three items that you mentioned that are clearly associated with the leasing. And then all the others are just, you know, because of living, fuel cost, and session, and summonses. They're outside of, they're employees.
Yeah, I mean, I think what...
Just want to have that break down in my mind.
Yes, thank you. I mean, one, one other, you know, I hear people saying the MTA tax, when that started in November of, um, 2009, you know, people did see that it affected the, um, the amount of tips that they were earning. You know, and it became a cash flow issue because every, you know, every day, the amount that you are turning over becomes greater. I know for owner-operators, where they turn that in, you know, on a quarterly basis, I, this is one of the reasons that we've gone to Chairman Yaski about going back to the tax stamp collection, saying, "Please keep it with the Department of Finance," where it's, you know, $500 every six months instead of paying $2,000 every two years. Because the, the cash flow, you know, so one, there's the, there's the daily income, the weekly income, the month, monthly income, and then the annual income, right? How all of those numbers add up. And driver income fluctuates with, you know, with the, the season of work as well as, of course, with the price of gas. But the other issue is, is, um, you know, therefore, because of the fluctuations, your, your cash flow is, it's volatile, it's going up and down, up and down. And so if you get hit with a major expense when you're on that, on the downward spiral, I mean, that's when people end up going into their own credit cards to pay their bills or taking out loans, you know? And that's whether you're a lease driver from a fleet or from an agent, or you're an owner-operator.
Commissioner DeArson. Let me start by saying I am, like, oh, can't turn it off, is it on? Um, let me start by saying I am a proponent of a fair increase. I think it's important, I think it is, it is only, in my mind, it is how. But looking at page seven of your proposal, and there's a chart. You, you say the request is for a 15% increase. My question for you is, if I am a passenger that is traveling at 7:00 in the morning on a heavy populated street where there's going to be wait time, if we were to enact each component of your proposal, is the cost of that ride only an increase of 15%? Or is it 15% plus an additional $1 for the rush hour surcharge? And then in a... and then an additional fifteen? How much then is the increase if we were to adopt your proposal as it's contemplated?
Sure. I have a number of, we have a number of scenarios. We're looking at, you know, the mileage and the time, the length of the trip. Depending on the time of day, how much the increase would be. I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but we definitely, you know, get that to you. It would be, the total would be between fifteen to twenty percent, depending on the time of the day.
No, fifteen percent is the floor.
That's right.
Of what your proposal is. It's not, it's not really the proposal.
Yeah, and we don't claim that it is.
Okay.
I cite this in the petition because we're looking at kind of the most common typical trip for, you know, the most common time of day. And so that's why this scenario is in the petition. But as we've expressed to Chairman Yaski, you know, depending on the time of day, it would be, you know, between fifteen to twenty, you know? But we can get those scenarios to you.
I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Commissioner Jenna?
First of all, I see a major flaw in the TLC. It is a disaster when it comes to enforcement. And the explanation by the chairman that we have an attorney looking into it is not a... Chairman, an attorney does not resolve the issues that were just brought up as far as enforcement matters.
I hear that, and Commissioner Jenna, I want to assure you that we do see, I mean, I do see myself a need for strengthening our capacity to enforce the lease caps. You know, we have many parties, and we are trying to balance among them. We've increased our field enforcement quite substantially. But we do need additional focus on lease cap enforcement. I would like to work with you on implementing that.
I think that there's no doubt, but the question in anyone's mind, I think we have to first clarify exactly what charges are permitted, what's not, and then where do fractions occur. And I don't think this is occurring at every single level at every single garage. I would imagine there are...
No garage is charging a weekly rate. They're all charging you the daily rate. No, no agent is sticking to the contract or sticking to the medallion on the lease cap. We've seen these to be systematic across the board.
My last comment is, I'd really like a much clearer breakdown of the twenty-five percent loss in income. Using the 2006 model as well, but that's the base year. And my last question too is, how is it that we can wait six years for a fare increase?
Who wouldn't work in a job for that? Nobody but us.
Maybe it is fundamental, maybe it is two political eyes or us. And it's not healthy for the entire industry, top, down, or bottom up. What would you suggest be a better means of addressing any increase in cost of living, whether it be for fuel or other, what time?
So, I mean, I think that this process is certainly part of that solution. And just to go back to your first point, and other commissioners had also asked about the twenty-five percent breakdown. I do just want to add to that. It's not just about the number of twenty-five percent and where it comes from. It's really much more about the amount of money that it leaves drivers with, and how on certain shifts, you really are earning less than minimum wage at overtime. And of course, bearing in mind that for a taxi driver, every single shift is overtime. And so for us, this is an opportunity, not just to bridge that twenty-five percent, but more importantly, to bring drivers' incomes to a livable income standard, you know, where people can, you know, enjoy a dignified quality of life, you know, given the hours of work that they labor and the amount of service that they provide. In terms of, you know, I think you're absolutely right that we need to have a, you know, a real, a solution where we look at, you know, the impact of the cost of living on driver income, you know, on a regular basis. And we would say that just like lease caps are, there has to be a hearing on lease caps every two years, I would actually say it really should be every year. And as part of that, you look at are drivers earning a livable income? You know, are there, you know, there's so many things you cannot quantify, even when you say twenty-five percent are livable income, right? Like the impact on a person's health, you know? You know, in the city, in the administrative code where it lays out all year, all the guidelines, I believe Commissioner Caron had mentioned earlier, it doesn't quantify things like, you know, the amount of back pain people feel. It doesn't quantify things like the number of times, you know, you need to call out sick, but you're not able to, you know, because of your expenses and because you're not earning enough. But we really need to have a system that, first of all, you know, recognizes a working person's right to a quality of life is a policy matter. And it is a policy matter that fundamentally must be centralized by the TLC as a regulatory agency. And secondly, that it must be done, you know, in a timely manner, where, you know, I would say at a minimum of once a year. And we look at the totality, not only of the fare and the lease and the impact of, you know, things like the five percent, you know, the MTA, you know, the MTA, the state came down and said we had to collect the MTA tax, right? And the TLC enacted rulemaking to allow for that collection. But we've never had a hearing to talk about the impact of that on driver incomes. I think the state should be told what that impact is. They're going to be making those decisions. And I think also to look at broader issues of traffic. I think in looking at broader issues of traffic, you know, how much, you know, the fact that there's so many turn restrictions that are now being imposed on taxi drivers that did not exist even a few years ago. That has meant, you know, it takes longer to finish your trip, you're able to serve less passengers. Not only does it actually affect the driver's bottom line, but it even affects the riding public. Okay, it's a DOT matter, but the TLC is actually much more situated to have a thoughtful hearing about the impact of traffic on driver's livelihood as well as on the quality of service that we're able to provide to the public.
When you do submit your response, please put in the yearly review to address.
Okay.
I'd like to hear more about it, and you, I think that you have to say anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Tsai. Thank you very much for your testimony. Commissioners. We're going to take a half-hour recess. We will reconvene at 1:45. We have about fifteen, no? We have some twenty-five speakers.